I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, for the board's consideration, we have two recommended amendments. One would be to add an item seven to new business, which is appointment of administrative staff, EEMS, and to renumber previous items seven through nine to become eight through 10. And also to recommend that we take item J1, new business, staff-student presentation, and move that to immediately follow item C.
I move that we adjust the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Discussion? All of us in favor?
So we have for the board this evening, a presentation from students and staff at EEMS.
Good evening. We are thrilled to be here tonight, and we're thrilled because we have the kids. And that's the important part of all the business that we do in the school department. So tonight, for your edification and entertainment, we will have several of our students and many of our teachers here. And we'll do a little presentation about a grant that complemented Rachel and several others. We were granted several years ago. And that's called the Momentum Grant: Literacy and Technology. And many of you have been to the classrooms to see it in action, and it is amazing. And what you will see in the presentation tonight is, first of all, a little interactive part where we have student-teachers who will help you through. And "Ah-choo!" Isn't that what it's called, guys? Oh, it's a cahoot, okay. A special, special form of learning that they've utilized. So at this point in time, part of the Momentum Grant was that we needed to have a momentum leadership team. And the leader, fearless and marvelous, was Alexis Chapman. At this time, I'll introduce Alexis, and she'll tell us a little bit about what we're going to do. Oh, before I do that, I should put my glasses on and name the children who will be here. Ashlyn and Anna Atterton, Ryland Jester, Phoenix Torrey, Billy Chati, Joey Chakoti, and Hannah Frost. Thank you.
I am Alexis Chapman, and I teach first grade. And we will be having these students come up behind you and use their iPads to help you to get onto this cahoot. But before that, I would like to introduce the rest of the leadership team. Judy Weber.
Second grade.
Heather Wayman, third grade.
Susan Frost, kindergarten.
And we are missing some. We are missing Kelly Rudolph and... That's it? One of our literacy specialists. So, kids, come on. And do you guys want to take them up?
How about we go all the way down to the end? Violet, you want to start for Ate the Lady at the End? And go right... Go with Mrs. Thomas right here, right? Do we need one?
You can do it here. I'm gonna just squeeze over a little bit to give that personal room.
And then you can go with Mrs. Thomas. And then you can go right here.
All right, so I am going to push play, and then they will lead you through getting onto the cahoot. So you will have to find the app with them and then put in the number that you see on the screen. And then they will help you put in your name.
See, it's put first name, one emoji.
Then put in my name?
My name? Okay, so I just tap that?
And then put that down?
Okay, go.
Just first name, okay? Okay.
Hey, there's my name up there! How did they get up there? That's so cool.
Do you all see your names up there?
Yeah.
All right. And our two student leaders are going to read you the questions.
What is Seesaw? Red: A digital portfolio. Yellow: A math game. Blue: A reading app. Green: Playground equipment.
Tell them what to do.
No idea.
Some of the reading things is the right...
So... What is the Seesaw?
Before the timer goes on...
I think so.
All right, you know what? I'm gonna go here.
Incorrect! The Seesaw is not library equipment.
The answer was a digital portfolio. What is eSpark?
What is e...?
Is it a...
Red: Fireworks.
I can't read.
It's a better...
A science app from...
Is it this?
Green: A firehouse dog.
Or is it a gadget, individualized literacy app?
I think you probably know them anyway.
Data for revenge and individual literacy app. Is it literacy app? Is that what it is? We get a quick break, right?
It's correct.
Nice work!
What is Ethic? Red: A rock group. Yellow: An electronic picture. Blue: An adjective that means awesome. Green: A digital library for kids.
I got it right.
Which of these apps can be used as math and literacy practice? Red: Mobimax. Yellow: Build the Truck. Blue: YouTube. Green: Minecraft. You can use your iPad to publish writing, true or false?
Is it a quick question?
Yes.
Is it a trick question?
This could be a answer with... Teachers can monitor students and their progress using their iPads, true or false?
I would say that's true.
That's true.
Which apps can students use for free at home? Raskin's, Prodigy, Pet Bingo, all of the above? Which of these has the highest impact on student learning? Student-teacher relationships, teacher efficiency, teacher expectations of student learning, teacher clarity.
Which has the highest?
The highest.
I say student-teacher relationship.
My face, because since I can't read that. Super away on the wrong classes! I got it wrong!
Why is it important to keep one-on-one devices for our students? Accessibility to instructional technology? More time for differentiated, individualized instruction? Less teacher time away from teaching to manage devices? All of them. What do teachers use NWEA data for? To inform instructions, to match instructional technology with student needs, to differentiate, all of them.
Yeah, that's the last one.
And these students are first graders, second graders, and third graders who all use this app.
Thank you very much.
We hope they were helpful to you. Thank you. But you can see that technology impacts what we have gone in, how it can be entertaining and instructional all at the same time. Especially if you're winning that.
Thank you for having me go back to your seat.
Thanks so much for coming tonight. Thank you very much.
And some of the questions that were asked in the cahoot will be answered or talked more about in this presentation. This is all about the Momentum Pilot that we have been involved in since 2017. We have had the opportunity to have many professional development work through the DOE and through Apple. We have looked at those high-impact strategies, which are John Hattie's work. We have used data to really dig into our students' learning. Some of these that are on the bottom are what teachers have noticed, teacher observations of success, their students' confidence has gone up, taking responsibility for their own learning. The students are really showing that they want to do things and learn more. Letter ID scores have improved in the younger grades, and basic skills have improved on our Fountas and Penel assessments. This chart up here is looking at winter 2017 to spring 2018 K&amp;1 NWEA data. The scores on the left are what were observed. The scores on the right were what was projected by NWEA. And in each of these areas, we exceeded what was projected. And the reason we took kindergarten and first grade is because those are the two grades that would like to keep eSpark. Second and third grade, there is other data that we can share with you if you would like to. But this was just what we chose for this slide.
Alexis, could you just tell the audience who can't see that screen? Just pick one of those.
First grade, winters 2017 to spring 2017, our observed was 8.3 and our projected was 6.2 for growth. So they exceeded their growth of what they were going to do. Some of the high-impact strategies that were on the cahoot that we are looking at to continue for next year, they are represented by effect size, with .20 being a small effect size, .50 medium, and .80 a large effect size. And as you can see, the ones that we chose, teacher expectations of student learning has a 1.6 effect size. Teacher efficacy has a 1.57. Teacher clarity is .75. And student-teacher relationships is .72. And what that means is if students and teachers are buying into this and doing it well, then students who are receiving these high-impact strategies will grow or could have the potential to grow this much. Some of the students will share with you about some of the apps that they have been using.
When you begin. I like to use that thing because I just like some... Some Mummy Books and Spider Books. Thanks for watching!
Hi, my name is Parker. I like eSpark because you can make all kinds of videos and go on all kinds of apps and learn a lot of stuff. Bye!
Hi, my name is Hannah, I'm in first grade. I like using my iPad to help me because Seesaw has lots of things to do, like learn, like learn depth songs and songs. And I'll replay. I won't replay. I'll turn it back down.
These are some of the apps that we have used and we have been using successfully and hope to continue to use. And these are what the kids would see on their iPads. And we have some more videos that talk a little bit about these apps. The same way, you guys got the little invitation with the QR code, there are videos with some kids that talk about why they like those apps and what they use them for. Plus, besides these, anything that is already preloaded on the iPads we use. These are the things we hope to continue for next year. We want to continue the work with those four high-impact strategies that we talked about. Peer observations, we would like to set up a model where we can learn from each other by visiting our colleagues' classrooms or going into classrooms and doing a demonstration lesson. And we would hope to, after each NWEA administration, we would like to have a PLC that Kelly Rudolph and I would lead to talk about how to dig deeper into the data we receive from NWEA. And then we have our vision and mission statement. And the bullets at the bottom just talk about how the teachers feel that we are really connecting this program to the vision and mission statement.
Alexis, teacher, who is that?
Teachers use current data to plan the most meaningful learning experiences and next steps for instruction for each child. Programs/apps used eSpark are individualized, which allows for all students to be challenged at their current level. Whether it's above or below grade level, they are working at their level. Teachers participating in ongoing professional development will ensure their professional growth and demonstrate their commitment for educating our students to the best of their ability. And that's it.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you for inviting the board to visit the school in the last week to observe in the classroom. I enjoyed visiting your classroom. And the kids look like they're really getting a lot out of that program.
It was very exciting to see the kids so excited about learning and how this expedited every bit of the learning process, from less paper to less time, collecting papers to less time, having to grade papers. You know, you could see instantly what the kids had done. You could, you know, collect data, correlate that data very, very quickly. And, you know, this, to me, seemed like something that with all the mandates we have, that we have to teach every day, this is a big tool to help make sure that you have the time to teach all that you need to teach and keep the kids wanting to learn. Because if they don't love learning, they're not going to do it. And this, I saw a lot of happy, happy kids in those classrooms.
For the last several board meetings, I have talked about the person, my colleague, who helps me the most with data analysis and some of her work was up there. And I know she will come forward when she shot up. Deb Richards is the person who is not only a literacy coach, but she turns out to be our mentor, our colleague, and somebody who adds a great deal to our Momentum team and to our school. So no matter how shy she is, I thought I would just let you know that's the person I'm talking about when I see that. Ladies, thank you very, very much. And the kids were fantastic! Everybody watching.
It's nice to see the teachers as excited about the program as the students.
And the other person we have to thank is we thank her every time we turn around is April Clifford. Without whom, we couldn't do half of what we do.
Item D, approval of minutes for April 9, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes of the April 9, 2019 minutes as presented.
Second. Discussion? All of us in favor? Communications and correspondence.
There are a number of letters of resignation that I've circulated amongst the board, and I will address those when I get to my brief report. Yes, absolutely.
So if you would like to leave now. But parents, thank you so much, as always, for being so supportive. Teachers, we love you! Alexis.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Item F, public participation.
Starting from your face here.
I need...
Gwen Clark.
Yes, and I need to go through what, in case anyone else needs to speak also. I just want to remind people that members of the public may speak on any subject directly related to their operations of the school except for personnel matters or complaints concerning specific employees or students, which shall be addressed through the established policies and procedures. When you get up to speak, I'd like to have you give your name, please. And no complaints or allegations will be allowed at school board meetings concerning any person employed by the school system or against any particular students. Personnel matters and complaints concerning students and staff issues will not be considered in public meeting, but will be referred through established policies and procedures. And the board discourages duplication and repetition of comments. And we would like to have you keep all comments to a three-minute limit, please. Thank you.
Let's say, two times I've been denied on being on the school agenda, and it's got to be a record. They say three is a charm, so here it is. And there's a little bit of changes in it. I'm requesting a private meeting with the school committee with the option of inviting the school administrators. You've got a lot of leeway, where it's your time, your place, you name it, and I'll patiently await your reply.
Thank you.
A little information to think about. Your perception, your perception is your reality. If you don't like how life is playing out, you can always take charge of your own perception of reality. You are in control of your story. I first heard this when watching the Dr. Phil Show. He uses it a lot when dealing with out-of-control kids, addicts, and abusers of drugs and mental health issues. I've never heard him use it in describing a victim of bullying. I've heard this said to me about children who have been bullied at EEMS maybe over 100 times by numerous employees of the school, but I have never heard it from a teacher. It sounds like a polite way of calling victims of bullying liars. And because it's used so often there, there had to be a workshop held about it. And I know that Dr. Phil did not hold that workshop. My question for you, and I know you won't say anything, but I have to ask it anyway. How is a child in control of changing their own life? And does it come at a certain age? First grade, sixth grade, when? What they are living now is their reality. And when it gets altered, like somebody bullying them with no repercussions, how do they change that? I think they're supposed to be able to count on the adults in charge to fix it, but the adults in charge have failed them. My granddaughter is still getting bullied. The problems are not going away.
Excuse me.
Because there have been no reports to the office. And can you ask yourselves why children have stopped reporting incidents?
Ms. Clark, there is a policy that you can go through. There is a chain of command, but you can't speak about specific people. We have a chain of command. There's the way that you can appeal. You have to write it down. You have to send it to the next person in charge.
Okay, I understand.
But you can't stand here and talk about people within our school department.
Okay. I have a friend who's a superintendent, and I ask him, what do you do when the Federal Department of Education comes in to investigate your school to resolve an issue? And he said he couldn't tell me because he's never had this happen in his school. And like you said, if protocol is followed, a parent complains to the administrators. If nothing is done, then to the superintendent. And then, if nothing is done, parents can take it to the school committee. Well, it's usually resolved before then, according to him. So we're waiting, and we want to know when you plan to do your job.
Have you filed your complaint in writing to the proper people?
I have complaints today.
That's part of, we need to have it in writing. We... My first communication with you is you told me that we had a problem with the policy.
Yep.
I asked you to write, put down in writing what your problem with the policy was. You came back to me and said it was not your job to write policy and that if I didn't fix it, I was part of the problem. However, you never told us what was wrong with the policy. So now, you're asking us to talk about something different instead of changing the policy. So if you would put your issues in writing and send it as an appeal through the policy for bullying, J-I-C-K is the policy, then it can be addressed through the proper channels. Otherwise...
If we file an appeal, we file the appeal to the people that we're complaining about.
That's right. And then it goes to the next level.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Mrs. Clark? Mrs. Clark, in the policy J I C K, the appeal of the decisions that were made at the school, which is what your complaints are, are filed with the superintendent. To date, I have not received any complaints from you.
Well, right here, I have four complaints, and I'm asking, I'm giving them to you, to the school board members. I'm asking that you read them. I'm also asking that they be filed in each person's personnel file because at some point in the future, they're going to need it.
Mrs. Clark...
So I will give them to the school board to...
The proper procedure, which has been provided to you twice in writing, is to provide them through the appropriate channels in accord with policy J I C K.
I understand.
Which is through the superintendent.
I understand. And you know what the superintendent does with it? Tell me, because I'd really like to hear it.
Mrs. Clark, I'm just receiving them now. I'll now have an opportunity to address your concerns.
Okay. Well, those are for the school board members to read first, if you don't mind.
But the policy is they come to the superintendent, Mrs. Clark.
And I feel that we have taken all the appropriate action that we've needed to take, and we're at the end of it. But I'd like to thank you for your time. And remember, even your perception is your reality.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Houston. Thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes this evening. In recent months, there's been this ongoing story of bullying at EEMS that has gone unchecked. The issue's been brought up here. It's been in the news several times. I'm the mom of one of the students who was accused. And the public doesn't get to hear from the accused very often. Instead, it's just easier to just gang up and bully them back. And I get that. It's human nature. We've stayed out of the public eye. I don't want to do this. I don't want to drag my family into this. I don't want to make my daughter's life more miserable. But I wanted the school board to know that we've done our own investigating. I have met with my daughter's teacher, the guidance counselor, Mr. Higgins, Mrs. Gabionelli, the moms of the accusers, and the accusers themselves. And I wanted to say here tonight that in my estimation, for my case, that the school did do their job, that they did follow policy and procedure. It did not go unchecked. There were some untruths, some misunderstandings, an investigation was held. Those untruths and misunderstandings came out. The girls were separated. End of story, right? So a letter was left on my daughter's desk. It was my daughter who received a note from another student that has been repeatedly referred to as a suicide note. And I need to say in this forum tonight, because this is where it was brought up first, that it was not...
You've got to be careful what you're saying and not be specific, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
That's not where it was. It was an attempt to end a friendship. It wasn't an attempt to end a life. And yet, 10 o'clock Thursday night on the news, what do I hear? The same story again. It needs to stop being referred to as that. Ellsworth American, if you can hear me, if you're going to come to a school board meeting and report on the meeting, you need to have your facts straight because you're ruining people's lives. There's a big difference between a story that says a girl was bullied to the point of writing this note and two girls were fighting and the one girl didn't want to be friends with her anymore. And the...
I have to ask you to conclude, please.
Okay. So in conclusion, 12-year-old girls, they fight. And there is a big difference between confrontation and bullying. And I just wanted to say tonight that the school administration is highly adept at deciphering between the two of these things. And I think we as parents need to take a little step back, take a little deep breath, and understand that difference ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Will Houston. I am a cybersecurity professional. I'm dyslexic, and I understand a lot about bullying. I had a teacher in second grade the second time that was kind enough to recognize some of these things and give me the accommodations to get me through a successful career. My daughter was involved in this. There are things I'd like to see proof of. We have worked very close with the administration and the students. There are some things we would like to see. But based on the proof that has been provided to me and the meetings that I've had with the students, the administration, I think the school has really done its job, and I appreciate that. My daughter has received some threats online outside of the school that has led to some taunting. Unfortunately, these are the only pieces of evidence that I have. I would be happy to share them. They were put in the public forum, therefore they're public access. This is the only one that I have proof of. And unfortunately, at this point, I am going to pursue those with the authorities, not with the school. I want to thank the school and its administration for protecting our children. I cannot imagine how hard your career path is. Period. Bullying exists in every facet of our society. Every facet. At work, driving down Route 1A, trying to get a parking spot. I have to thank the school and its administration for giving my daughter the tools to handle what she's going to see the rest of her life. We need to stop forcing our families to Facebook. In order for us to find out what's going on at the school, we are required to go to Facebook. Facebook has a policy that states no youth are allowed there. Under the age of 13, you're not allowed to be on social media for a reason. The things you say have absolute lasting effects that we don't even understand yet because it's brand spanking new. I think that policy at the school definitely needs to be reviewed. In addition, I think that as a community, we need to get together and learn about how this technology works. We need to learn how to protect ourselves, and we need to learn how to protect our children. The things that they're saying online are going to affect them for the rest of their life. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Item G, Administrator Board Reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. First, I'd like to start with a job and business fair that we had a week and a half ago. We had over 20 businesses in our gymnasium. We devised a schedule so that all the students would walk through the job fair. And I know hearing back from some businesses in the Chamber of Commerce, it went very well, and some kids left there with ideas of a summer job and was very successful and something that we'll look forward to doing in the future. We also had a NEAT visit, which was last Monday and Tuesday. And so that filled up all of Monday, all of Tuesday, a lot of different meetings. And we will get a report back that I'll share with you in two or three weeks. And then, we have students here today, and I'll start with, how about MPA Principal's Award, Sam Pelletier? Come on up. So every year, there is one senior that represents their school, and there's a luncheon in April, and it's always well-attended, and pretty much every school is there. And they have drawings for scholarships, $1,000 scholarship. Sam didn't win one.
I got some good food, though.
But, and it's based on citizenship, it's based on academics, it's based on leadership. And Sam is one of the best kids that you'll ever find and has ever gone through Ellsworth High School. He has over 101, 101 grade point average over four years, and he's going to Middlebury College next fall, and Middlebury's very lucky to have him. This is Sam Pelletier. Congratulations. And National History Day state champions, Miriam Nelson and Caitlin McPherson, come So this is the second year in a row that they won, and there's a national competition in Washington, DC at University of Maryland that they hope to attend and are getting ready for their presentation. Do you want to tell them a little bit about your presentation?
So we created a group exhibit on the Underground Railroad in Maine, and the topic, the overall topic was triumph and tragedy. So we had to incorporate that in any of our choosing. But because next year is Maine's bicentennial, we decided to do something on Maine, and that is what we came up with, so.
Yeah, and we're hoping to go to the national competition. We went last year, and it was a really great experience. You got to see, meet people from all over the country and even some international teams just showing, displaying their history. And so it was really fun, and we hope to do that again this year.
Congratulations to both.
And last, I have some boys here who are state champions for swimming, and Ella Clark, who is PVC Swimmer of the Year, come on up. And I think Ellsworth right now has a streak of either being state champions as a team or individual champions or relay champions. And so I will have you go through, why don't you say your name, the event you won, your state championship, and if you're a senior, where you're going to go next year. And Ella, you can talk about your events and where you're going to go next year.
So I'm Ella Clark, and I swam the 50 free and 100 back, and I was in all three relays. And I'm going to be attending Hussin next year, and I will be on the swim team.
My name is Bega Markozian. I swam the 400 freestyle relay, and I'm a senior, and I'm going to be attending Oberlin College next year.
My name is Nicholas Partridge, and I swam the 200 medley relay, and I'm not going to college for a while.
My name is Sam Pelletier. I swam the 200 medley relay, the 400 medley relay, and I think it was 100 back, and I'm the second and the two I am. And I'm going to go to Middlebury College next year, planning to study environmental science and swim for them.
Hello, I'm Camden Holmes, and I swam the 200 yard medley relay, the 50 free, the 100 free, and the four freestyle relay, and I'm going to the University of Maine next year.
And you're going to swim?
Yeah.
All right.
Congratulations.
I was representing one of the businesses that was at the job fair, and I just want to commend Ellsworth High School students who came through the gym that day. They were very poised and professional, and all presented themselves as great candidates for the workforce. So thanks for putting that on. It was really great.
It was fun. It was a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Ms. Gabionelli.
That certainly is a hard act to follow with all those kids. Good evening. I am happy to be here with you tonight and talk to you about an opportunity that our seventh graders took place in last week with Julie Videm and Machias Savings Bank. Junior Achievement came into our school, and we did JA for a day where they provided financial lessons to our seventh graders. The seventh graders got to choose occupations, and they got a salary, and then they got to choose which sports car they're going to buy with their money. And it was really a lot of really great lessons on personal finance. They got to learn what can happen when you overuse your credit card and debit card and all of those things that we all probably learned the hard way before we had Junior Achievement lessons. But they did a fantastic job. The kids were really engaged. Julie and her team of people from Junior Achievement were wonderful, really getting the kids going and interested. And this is all leading up to their planning for their medieval fair that's coming up next month. So they're going to start to plan their projects and budget out what they're going to do. And so that's a nice segue into how they begin their medieval festival projects. So that was fun. Today, our fifth and sixth graders had an opportunity to go to the Grand and view the movie Wonder. And there was a great talkback with our clinical counselor, Stacy Wood, and Ashley Piesek from AMHC about the movie and about bullying and how it applies to our students. So that was a wonderful opportunity for them to partake in. And Nicole Cardano at the Grand, a big thank you to her for organizing it all. She did a great job. Also, our PBIS team has been working to reinforce the positive behavior expectations in our school. We just had a Falcon Focus on our hallway behavior, and they were able to reward students for that positive behavior that we're seeing. We're continuing to work on those expectations, and the kids have set their own expectations for the next Falcon Focus of lunchroom behavior, cafeteria behavior. So that is our next Falcon Focus, and we'll be rewarding kids on the good things that we're seeing them do there. Co-curricular Band and Chorus put on a wonderful performance on May 8th. It was fantastic. The spring play is underway. The rehearsals are going very well, I hear, and we're excited to see a lot of new faces that are participating this spring. So we have a lot of new students that are getting involved, which is awesome. Spring sports are up and running when Mother Nature cooperates. We have practices and games that are going on, and our kids are going to get, the baseball and softball teams are going to get an opportunity to play underneath the lights in Brewer this week. So that's going to be a really neat opportunity for them. And our robotics team competed in their robotics track meet, and we had two students earn a first and a second place trophy for the fastest robots. So that was pretty fantastic. We had our PTF meeting today, and I'd like to send a big thank you to all of the parents who donated to our Teacher Appreciation Week, the PTF, Helen's Restaurant Darlings, and Stanley Subaru for making teacher appreciation so special. They all kind of dropped off different things, and our parents and PTF did a wonderful breakfast. We kind of stretched it into a two-week celebration for teachers. And Morton's Moo as well, they provided us with some delicious ice cream. So a big thank you to everyone who donated to appreciate all of our teachers. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
The best part of what I had to say left earlier. And the beauty of having a K-8 school that's really starting to work together is K-8 instead of K-4, 5, 8, is that when the middle school principal gives the report, she's told about most of the stuff we've done, and it's fantastic. But one of the things that I pointed out here, I have not been really able to be active in that garden club this year, and what wonderful things they do. But they met a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Higgins and Chuck Turnbull and myself about where we are going to plant a tree in honor of a retired second-grade teacher who, though she wasn't able to be there last week, we shared a couple of stories, and the garden club gave us a couple of stories that we hope that she might come and read to some of our kids when time allows for her. But it was a beautiful fir tree, and I had a lovely outfit on, didn't I, Erica?
You did.
Yep, there you go. Tree, it was a tree pants that looked like trees and a top and green everything. It was just fantastic. So among the questions I asked the kids were, what do trees need to grow? And how are trees like kids? And then I ended that with, and do you like Mrs. Lewis's tree pants? And they were all paying attention and laughed like crazy and said yes. So they're all going to third grade. It was second grade, in case I didn't mention that. I had a conversation with the teachers, and they said, we're not nervous in front of kids, but, oh my word. I said, don't be silly. They're just big kids up there at that table. And that is true for a lot of us. But things are going well, and we are looking at continuing the best of practices. And when they talked about the effectiveness of practices and what impacts, y'all did pretty well on that Kahoot, by the way. Until Ms. Gavin Ellie did the Kahoot for opening day, I had not seen one. So I was fascinated that you could have so much fun trying to learn and answer questions. And I hope the kids all had a little answer sheet, so you should all gotten them right. But I have to tell you something, they are such honest, stand-up kids. They want you to get it on your own, because that's what they would do. But as we close the school year, I would say to you, despite some of the bumps and waves that we've had this year, those kids are coming in the morning and going out in the afternoon, for the most part with smiles on their faces. And it's not just about the teachers, it's about the staff and all the people who are caring for them. We had a conversation at PTF tonight about wanting to work more carefully and more thoughtfully with parents next year, so that people who want to help us, who really want to be partners, we're giving them all the information they need to help us help their kids grow and learn. So it's a good feeling, and it's a good school system, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowles.
Good evening. If you recall, a few months ago, I talked to you about the EMBARK opportunity that our school had earned, and I'm excited to report that we have selected our nine students to fill our nine EMBARK slots. If you recall, the EMBARK program is a college access program. These students are students who will now have a college advisor, starting their junior year in high school, and will work with them on their transition to the college application process. And any college courses that they take through this program are fully paid for, as well as their books. And if they choose to go on to the community college system, they could receive up to $3,000 in tuition coverage for their coursework. So I'm excited to announce that Carly Desmond from Culinary Arts in Ellsworth High School, Race Parsons Culinary Arts MDI High School, Brianna Simpson Law Enforcement Ellsworth High School, Jocelyn Tozier from our CNA program Bucksport High School, Hope Osborne and Mackenzie Grindel are also in CNA and from George Stevens Academy, Tucker Harrington, Diesel Technology from Ellsworth High School, Brianna Ketti Biomedical and our Academics Program from Naragüe High School, and Rachel Shepherd in our Early Childhood Program and Academics from DRL Stonington. So we worked really hard to get a good cross-section of all the sending schools. Some of our sending schools have this program also, so we collaborated with those schools to make sure we weren't double-dipping and got as many children involved as possible. So we're really excited that that has started up, and their college advisor, Hope Holyoke, has already come and met with them for the first time. I did provide in my report our enrollment sheets for the fall, and I didn't know if any of you had questions about what you saw. Our number right now is 228. When I ran this report, I still had two carpentry students on there, who obviously will not be on there anymore with the dissolution of that program. However, we added two MDI students today to two different programs, so we're still steady at 228 as of this afternoon. That number will continue to move right up through October 1st. As you know, one of the big pushes from the state, which we're very excited about, is career and technical education access in grades six through eight, and now this has kind of pushed the conversation about career and technical education grades nine and 10. But specifically, $500,000 had been allocated for this project, and our specific allocation at HCTC is for a little under $17,000. At our HCTC advisory meeting this past Thursday, I was given unanimous approval to move forward with the RFP application process for that $17,000. So I wanted to let you know about that, and also let you know that with this particular grant, this grant is a little more stringent and has more requirements than this past year's did. This past year's was kind of open to do, try out any kind of activity you want, see how it goes. This is much more targeted and specific for what we need to do and how we access, to include career discovery and certain standards within career discovery and then career exploration. Finally, I am really excited to report that for the second year in a row, HCTC participated in the GOES Cybersecurity Access Competition, and we actually won the state competition. We had 21 young ladies participate in six challenges each. That included the areas of programming, Linux, forensics, cryptography, and coding. Sarah Petroulis, our biomedical instructor for the second year, put this together, and she got 21 girls from all over HCTC and all the different programs, and they participated in this. And we found out we won a $1,000 gift card from Amazon for us to do as the grand prize. Deering High School came in second, and Sanford High School came in third, so yeah, we were pretty tickled, pink, that we did this. And the kids worked together to kind of propose what they want to spend the $1,000 on, and they were all very interested in a coding station for our school, because that's not something we have currently, and a lot of sending schools do. So they would like to use the $1,000 to provide a mobile coding station that students can access for whatever projects they might be working on throughout the building. So I was very proud and excited that they won first prize in this contest. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Coleman-Ramos.
Good evening. I am very excited and hoping that everyone will, who's been sent in invitation, will attend our Title 1A Literacy Night. This year, it will be held on May 21st at EEMS on Tuesday, and will be in collaboration with the end-of-year Title 1A After-School Celebration. Families who join us will be able to enjoy two activities. Wonderful food made by the after-school students in one room, and they write out all their recipes, and so they're able to read them to their parents and share all the ingredients. And a summer book and game giveaway, along with ideas for summer literacy activities with our really wonderful Title 1A teachers in the library. So they'll be able to have two stations and be able to swap, and so we've invited all of our families who are receiving Title 1A services, and if they aren't families who go to the after-school, they can learn more about the after-school program and vice versa. So we're very excited they have joined forces this year. Should be a lot of fun. So that will be May 21st at EEMS, and you should watch for your invitations that I believe have already gone out. The comprehensive needs assessment, you will remember that last year, we had a very long process where we had an advisory committee, and all of our principals and administrators worked together to develop goals that we would focus on throughout our district. They aligned with our vision and mission, and we are now creating a strategic plan, keeping those goals in mind as well. And this year, as a follow-up for our assessment written last year, we'll be reconvening the CNA advisory team to revisit our current data in the context of those goals that we set for our district last year, so we can kind of get a sense of where we are. We're asked to do this yearly review as a means to reflect on our progress over the last year, both academically and in terms of overall school growth on several factors. You'll remember that some of those are in developing assessments, in attendance, and so, and academic factors as well. So we'll be taking the new data we have after our last set of NOEA scores are brought in, and we'll be able to look at those and talk about some of the other measures in our school district, just to kind of, to look back at where we are and where we're going. In another effort to continually reflect on that instructional practice and seek feedback from our family community, we'll be holding our Title 1A Parent Advisory Council meeting on Thursday, June 6th, to look back at the year of Title 1A services and discuss our successes, any recommended changes, and new ideas or challenges. We are really grateful for our parent volunteers for spending their valuable time with us. We've gotten wonderful feedback from them, and their feedback, for instance, about our spaghetti night earlier this year, helped us develop the ideas for the literacy night that we'll be having next week. So we're really grateful for them for that. And finally, once again, our MEA testing has concluded for the year, in no small part because of the patience, expertise, and dedication of our amazing IT team at the Ellsworth School Department. Our school district is so lucky for and thankful to April Clifford, Jen Berry, Jess Lewis, Jared Young, and Mark Jenkins for their knowledge and persistence as they help teachers and students complete these assessments. This is no small task. This is a very large school system. There are deadlines all the time. The DOE is not always timely in some of their directions. They often change course midway. They don't always have the support that everyone needs, but because we have such an amazing team, we are able to get through it every year with as little impact on the students. And so I think that we should really be aware of how much of that impact our IT department takes, so that the students and teachers get as little of it as possible, and that's always our hope for our assessments. We want those assessments to inform our instruction and not to be impactful in any other ways. And so truly, our IT department takes that impact for us, and I do want to thank them. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins.
Yes, in anticipation of a lengthy agenda tonight and a lengthy and enjoyable student presentation, I have a brief report for you. First, I want to touch on the letters of resignation and one letter of retirement, just to announce that Jess Freeman, Title 1 Literacy Specialist at EEMS, is resigning. Ellen Fettish, grade four teacher at EEMS. Melissa Veeth, school nurse at EEMS. Ethan Edmondson, music teacher at EEMS. Russ Coffin, maintenance custodian at HCTC in the district office, is retiring. Kurt Clark, custodian. Michael Lynch, custodian. Malin Shu, music director at EEMS Performing Arts. And Colleen Mutlu, all resigning. We have a number of vacancies for next year. We want to get a plug out for this. We have posted them, but we have a gifted and talented position at EEMS. We have two positions in the classroom at EEMS, a grade three teacher and a grade four teacher. We have a grades five through eight music teacher at EEMS. A literacy specialist at EEMS. An English language learner teacher, which is both at EEMS and EHS. And a math teacher at Hancock County Technical Center for the Academics Program. Now, those are the vacancies that we have, that we know we're going to have. After you take action on the budget this evening, we will look to post some anticipated vacancies. As you know, through the budget process, we have a number of positions that we'd like to add. Even though we're going to talk specifically about the budget here in a few minutes, I do want to, for the community's benefit, talk a little bit about the budget approval timeline. As you know, later on this agenda, you're going to be taking up our budget that we've been working on for a number of months. We'll discuss it and look for your approval and authorization to submit it to the city council. But the following dates are pretty important for our citizens. The city council will here and take action on the school department budget next Monday, May 20th, and the annual budget validation referendum vote is set for Tuesday, June 11th. So citizens, we encourage you, Monday, May 20th, the city council. Tuesday, June 11th is the vote, and we encourage all of you to make a note of the referendum date and to exercise your civic responsibility and cast your vote. Any questions?
Thank you, Dan.
Item H, committee reports.
Policy committee has not had a need to meet at this time.
Okay. Finance committee has met a couple of times, and leadership's met a couple of times, and I think that's probably it, and that will all be discussed later. Item I, old business, there's none. Item J, one, we've taken care of. Item J2, discussion and consideration of overnight out-of-state trips. Ellsworth High School jazz band trip to Massachusetts.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Calandro. I'm the music director at Ellsworth High School, and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak about a potential trip that we could be involved in. Our jazz band, after receiving a silver rating at the regional festival and placing third in Class A at the state festival and receiving a bronze medal there, was invited by Festival's Edge, who is a nationwide corporation that seeks to further the enrichment of music programs across the country, and they sponsor the Music in the Parks competition, which is held nationwide from President's Week all the way to the week of June 1st. And our band, our jazz band, has been invited to travel to Springfield, Massachusetts, to compete in one of these Music in the Parks festivals paced upon our body of work this year. They would perform at a local high school in Springfield in front of a judging panel for a rating, be critiqued by six judges of various backgrounds in music, and then attend an award ceremony later that evening in Six Flags New England on Saturday, June 1st. We would leave EHS on Friday, May 31st at around noon, and travel to Springfield, where we would check into our hotel and have dinner, and have a meeting to prepare for the performance the next day. Our performance at 9:40 a.m. would be at a local high school on Saturday, as I said, in front of a panel of judges, where we would be rated and critiqued. Students would then get to enjoy the day in Six Flags New England before attending the awards ceremony with 12 other schools from all across the eastern seaboard, where we would learn the results of the competition, and also any individual awards that might have been presented to us. Afterwards, we would depart for EHS, arriving around midnight. This trip is student-funded. We recognize that, given the short notice of the invite, that full fundraisers are difficult at this time, and we would fundraise as much as possible between our invite and the date of the trip. We are holding a bake sale in the cafeteria at school, and also a 50-50 raffle at our concert, which is held on May 30th at the high school. I should say the Spring Arts Festival, not just the concert. And in addition, several parents of our students have generously kicked in extra money to aid any students that feel a financial burden to meet the per-student fee to go, and local businesses have already agreed to sponsor a student that, or alleviate the cost for the entire group, to make sure that the entire group would be able to participate. Am I allowed to say the names? Does it matter? Is it relevant?
Names of the businesses?
Yeah.
I think you should say the names of the businesses.
Okay, yeah, so Clark Construction and Brown's Appliance has generally agreed to donate or sponsor a student that feels unable to burden the financial costs of this trip. The students that are presently in jazz band would be eligible to attend. They earned this chance through their hard work and their high scores at both the regional and state festivals, and they would be able to enjoy free time in the amusement park between their performance and the awards ceremony. I would just like to say also that the students have been amazing this year. I'm incredibly blessed to be able to work with them on a weekly basis throughout, and they give up their free time, and they're really vested in the program, and it's made my job as the music director very, very rewarding, so, and I'm happy that they would have an opportunity after to evaluate the performance and the competition itself and the educational value of the trip. So, thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple. How many students are we?
It's about 20. I put, I don't know if you all have copies of the report that I provided. It says 22. It's probably going to be around there. I'm thinking right now it's 20.
And what type of transportation are you taking?
School bus.
School, okay. And I just have one other question. Why are you not staying Saturday night? Is that just to be cost-effective?
Yes, yes. I originally had wanted to, because that's a long, that's a long day and a long night back, but that would add another, you know, the hotel is $99 a night, which would wind up adding for students in its triple or quadruple occupancy, so it would wind up adding another $30 to $35 per student for that extra night, and a lot of them had indicated to me that, oh, we can, we can do it if it's one night, but I really have a problem if we are staying two nights. So in the end, it was more to maximize student participation over comfort of a good night's sleep, I guess, or an early night's sleep, I should say. Not that teenagers would go to sleep early anyway, but you never know.
Come on, they're sleeping their beds.
Do you have another question?
No.
I have a question. Even though our practice is not to make direct solicitations to individuals for funding, will we accept donations, and if so, where can we, where can people who are interested direct them?
Well, yes.
Would that be at Ellsworth High School?
Yes, yes, it would be. I would also like to, we are performing for the Alumni Association tomorrow, and as far as I understand, it's open to the public, so if you would like to see the group that is performing, you're more than welcome to attend. It's at 7:15 at Ellsworth High School tomorrow.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Entertained motion.
I make a motion that we approve the overnight trip for the jazz band to Massachusetts as presented.
Second it. Discussion? All those in favor?
Have fun.
Thank you.
Ellsworth High School National History Day Competition in Washington, D.C.
You're up again, Mr. Clifford.
Mrs. Cutney had some childcare issues, so, yeah, so as Caitlin and Miriam had said before, they both qualified and won gold in the state competition, so they qualify for the national competition. And it is in June at University of Maryland. And it is five days, five days. And as I said, it's a great experience, and they're really looking forward to going back. Again, they'll do some fundraising to help offset the cost, and Julia Berry and Carrie Cutney will be going with them again, as they did last year, as chaperones. And so, yeah, it's a trip.
Yep, I'm ready.
I move that we approve the overnight out-of-state trip to the National History Day Competition in Washington, D.C. as presented.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
J Three, Consideration and Approval of the Ellsworth School Department, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget and authorization to submit to the Ellsworth City Council.
We've been working a long time to get to this point, I believe. And I believe you've all received your materials in your packets.
Yep.
So, if I were, and I know board members are fully knowledgeable about what's in there, but I'd like to run through the budget proposal for members of the audience and also for our viewing public. The guiding principles in the preparation of the F Y twenty Ellsworth School Department budget are to adequately and appropriately fund public education for our students at a level responsible to taxpayers, to maintain consistency with Ellsworth School Department vision and mission, and support all ongoing efforts to continually improve all aspects of school department operations. Ultimately, our goal is to be regarded as the best school system in the state of Maine, one that provides an outstanding and comprehensive academic and co- and extracurricular experience for all students, and plays an integral role in the continued growth and development of the city of Ellsworth. Included under that goal are the following objectives: assure that the proposed expenditures result in high-quality programs for our students; make our system regarded as not only an attractive, but the best option for families with school choice or who are considering relocating to the area; contributing to the economic and workforce development in our area; and be supported by U R Board, by the City Council, and our community members. Since we initiated the budget prep process in mid-November of two thousand eighteen, we've worked with our staff to craft a budget consistent with our guiding principles, address specific needs in terms of increased staffing, transportation, and facilities and maintenance needs, including ongoing enhancements in the interest of the safety and security of our students and staff. While this final draft and formal proposal reflects a number of identified needs in terms of staffing and facilities, infrastructure that are not included, and I stress that, a lot of needs that are not included, we're confident that the budget as presented will meet our prioritized needs for the nineteen-twenty school year, reflect our vision and mission, conform to our guiding principles, and meet with the support of the council and our citizens. What I'd like to do is just do a general overview of the projected revenue and proposed expenditure side of the budget. As you as a board know, funds to support the school department budget come from the following sources: state support in the form of subsidiations and debt service reimbursement; tuition revenues from communities who pay for the resident students who choose to attend Ellsworth High School; and local citizen support through property taxes. The Maine Department of Education distributed its annual funding documents on February twenty-six, two thousand nineteen. Governor Mills' proposed education budget included an increase of forty-one million dollars statewide for F Y twenty and eighty-five million for F Y twenty-one into the funding model. And that funding model is based upon a combination of enrollment, fiscal capacity, which is our valuation, and past expenditures. With a projected increase in state funding for education in the formula, the mill rate applied to the city valuation to determine the required local contribution was reduced from eight-point-four-eight to eight-point-two-eight mills, resulting in a decrease in the amount the city is required to raise in order to receive full subsidy. That reduced by one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars to eight million, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. In addition to that, we'll also see an increase of seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-four cents in subsidy and debt service reimbursement. The state also provides fiscal support for career and technical education programs. As a result of the increased state support of education, we're projected to receive an increase to one-point-four-nine-seven million dollars in our C T E subsidy allegation, and that's an increase of almost one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. One thing that's important to remember, even though you're being asked to vote on the budget this evening, we will not know the final budget figures from the state until the legislature votes. My understanding is we may see a budget the last week of this month. But remember, revenue figures will not be final until such time as the legislature adjourns. I mentioned in the discussion of revenues that some of our revenues are derived from other sources, such as tuition and assessment for C T E students. Okay? The figures that are being presented to you this evening and will be presented to the council next Monday are based upon the enrollment projections for two thousand nineteen, twenty, which for tuition students reflect actual student represent, excuse me, actual student registration and projected numbers of incoming students from our eighth-grade surrounding communities. And as Mrs. Bowles mentioned earlier, applications that we receive through, from students who are anticipating participating in C T E programming. We also adjust those C T E applications to reflect an historical change in the number of applications that we receive this time of year and the number of students who actually show up in October, excuse me, in September. So, with regard to proposed expenditures, in general terms, the budget focuses on several primary needs: increases in staffing due to shifting enrollment at the K-eight level, where we need to make sure that we have the appropriate target student-teacher ratios, and a projected increase of about forty-seven students at Ellsworth High School for next year, making it the largest freshman class we've had in quite some time. Also, we're looking at increases in staffing due to an increase in the number of students enrolling in Ellsworth schools who come with special needs, who require additional supports; emerging needs to support increasing numbers of students who are eligible for services under Section five oh four, who are eligible for services as English language learners; and an increase in the number of issues with students that we see who exhibit mental health and behavioral challenges. As you've seen in the media over the past several months, that's become a concern and a challenge in schools across the country. Again, what is not included is staffing to address potential unanticipated increases resulting from the increase in housing starts in Ellsworth. Last year at this time, we were proposing a budget to meet the needs of the students that we were projecting to enter Ellsworth schools. What we found out in September was, and a great deal of it is directly connected to the increase in available housing in our area, nearly fifty unanticipated students in our school system, most of them at the K-through-eight grade levels. Even though we know there are a number of housing starts being considered by the Planning Board and the council, we cannot predict with any certainty how many students are going to be coming into our schools next year. So, we've added staff to address what we know. We may be looking at having a discussion later on with regard to the increased housing. And again, that's one of the pros of growth of your community. As we all know, Ellsworth is a growing community. Hancock County is a growing region. With that and with the attractiveness of our schools, we're going to see increases in enrollment. This budget also includes funding to support annual maintenance and facility repairs and updates, including a number of items in the budget, as you know from past year's discussions, that have been deferred over years. You can only defer maintenance and upgrades to your facilities for so long. With that being said, what I'd like to do is just get into a little more specifics in regard to the cost centers. So, under regular instruction, which is our pre-K through Grade Twelve programming, regular education, we are looking to add the equivalent of eight new teaching positions. When you look at teaching positions, we budget for salary and benefits approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. That makes up the overwhelming bulk of the increase in that cost center of five-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, which is an eight-point-five-five percent increase in regular instruction. Again, that is due to increase in student enrollment. Under special instruction, we're seeing an increase of one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, which is a four-point-eight percent increase in special education. What's included in that, again, new staffing to support students. Half of a teaching position will be included to be a behavioral interventionist. This will be a staff member who will work with our students who demonstrate behavioral issues and help develop plans for implementation to help them address their behavioral needs. We will also see, under special instruction, due to students who will be entering the system and need supports, a net of four new EdTech three positions to support those students. Career and technical education, I'd like to step over that for a moment. I'll come back to it. In other instruction, which includes your after-school, your summer school, your co- and extracurricular, we're looking at a three-point-eight percent increase or just over twenty-six thousand dollars. That's a category that typically what we look at is increases in stipends. And what we're looking at this year is some equipment needs that we have at Ellsworth High School in terms of the athletic program totaling twenty-six thousand dollars. So, when you look at the overall spectrum, we're holding steady in that category. However, we have some needs that need to be addressed. Student and staff services, which includes your nursing, which includes your guidance, which includes your instructional technology, which includes curriculum and assessment, which also includes professional development, is increasing by six-and-a-half percent, one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars. Again, what we're looking at in there, I mentioned in my introduction, we're looking at an increase in the number of students that we have who are eligible for services under Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. Last year, we added a case manager to work with students, hoping it would be sufficient to address the caseloads for our entire school system. We found very early on that it was not, so we were seeking to add another position and structure those positions, so we have one as a case manager for grades K-through-six, one as a case manager for grades seven through twelve. And we're talking over a hundred students who are eligible under that section. We're also looking at, when you look at the presentation you saw this evening, you know we're a one-to-one school system with technology. That technology requires a lot of attention from staff. We're looking to add a new I T staff member. And we're also looking, this is a progression that's taken place over the past several years. We started with our instructional coach being funded completely out of Title I and Title II with the plan of transitioning that to our local budget. When you look at grant funds, such as Title I, Title II, Title IV, that for the most part are holding level in their funding amounts each year, it's becoming necessary to transition that position. So, current year, we have half of that position funded under the local budget. The budget for next year proposes to include all of that position under the local budget. So, again, we're looking at staffing as the bulk of the increase. System administration, which is the school board, the superintendent, and our business office, we have an increase of two-point-seven-five percent. There are wages included in there, and there's a fourteen increase in liability insurance that we're expecting this year. School administration, which is your principals' offices, we're looking at a fifty-six thousand dollar increase or six-point-six percent. Again, you have wages increases in there, and we are projecting for health insurance changes, and this is, changes in the plans that people take in the amount of approximately thirty thousand dollars. We've also increased the wages for the administrative assistant-level positions that we have manning our schools from three to six o'clock in the afternoons. Facilities and maintenance, we have been operating since we withdrew from R S U twenty-four, down one or two custodians from what we used to have. We added a position two years ago. We're requesting increasing one of our halftime positions to become full-time. That will give Mr. Turnbull the staffing he needs to do the work that he needs to do to keep our schools looking good. We also have a number of maintenance items that are included in this increase. We have furniture and fixtures in the amount of forty-four thousand. There is stage lighting, gym ceiling fans. If you know the work that we did on the gym this past year to address the leaks that we had. One of the things, we are maintaining so much heat in the building, we need to find a way to generate the air. So, we have ceiling fans included in the budget. Conference room tables and chairs. If you talk with Mr. Clifford, and I happen to agree with him on this one, these are tables and chairs that have been there since the school was open back in the mid-nineties.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Mr. Clifford? We're also looking at capital renewal. We're continuing with our paving of the school parking lot and at Ellsworth High School. We're looking at window and door replacement, which is an annual upgrade that we've phased in over the years. We're looking at refinishing and repainting the gymnasium floor. Again, the gym floor has not been refinished and resanded since the late nineteen nineties. It should be done every ten to twelve years. That's one of the examples of deferred maintenance that really needs to be done. We're also looking at the soccer field lights at Deluce Stadium, looking at replacing the crossbeam members that hold the lights and the lights, and there's a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that line. Okay? We're also looking at a projected increase in utility expenditures. This is new from the last time that we met with you in your budget workshop. When we look at electricity, we're looking at an increase there because the contract that we had for many of our accounts expires in December. We've signed into a new contract, which shows a slight increase in kilowatt-hours. And we're also looking at an increase in the price of heating oil. That's a seventy thousand dollar increase. So, when you look at everything that is included in our facilities and maintenance, you're talking about a twelve-point-four percent increase, two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. Transportation, we have an increase of one-point-seven percent or sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. We start with why that's a little bit lower. As we've discussed last year through the budget process, this year was our first year without having our own mechanic in-house. We knew that we had some needs with our buses. We maintained our budget levels with regards to repairs and maintenance contracted services and also for parts and supplies, knowing that a great deal of work was going to be done on our bus fleet. In taking care of all that work, we've revised that budget down significantly in the contracted repairs and services and also in the parts and supplies. In doing that, it allows us to come in with a budget increase of under seventeen thousand dollars, even when you include a replacement school bus for one of our buses that's taken out of service. An overflow bus driver, and again, you know, last year, we put an overflow bus driver in, and when we had an increased number of students in the fall, that overflow bus driver became a regular bus driver. We've also got a new van driver to help us address the transportation needs of some of our incoming students. In our food services program, what we look at for our budget in food services, we look at the contribution that the city will be making to support that program. We're seeing a seventeen percent increase or twenty-two thousand dollars. What that is going to be covering is a new position at E E M S to support needs, an increase in food expenses, excuse me, food expenses because of increased enrollment, and also fifty-two thousand dollars in replacement of equipment that is aging and costing us more to repair than it is to replace. One of the things that helps us keep that cost at a reasonable amount is that we're applying seventy-two thousand dollars in fund balance and dedicated balances to support those purchases. Our adult education program, which we also look for support to the city for, has an increase of two-hundred-and-fourteen, excuse me, a total assessment of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars or a three-point-eight-three percent increase. What we're looking at there in areas, position to support high-set and high-school completion expenses, increases in wages and insurance, tuition reimbursement and training, and a computer upgrade and telephone upgrade for the adult education offices. The number of needs that we have exceed the number of, the amount of capacity we have for the phone program. The thing that helps us keep those costs in a reasonable place are that we have sixty-nine thousand dollars in fund balance to offset proposed expenditures. When looking at the overall increase, what we're looking at is, on the expenditure side of the budget, an increase of one-point-six-seven-one million dollars or seven-point-eight-two percent, and that includes adult education. What I'd like to do is spend just a couple of minutes talking about where those increases come from. When you look at that total increase of one-point-six-seven-one million, forty-nine percent of that is attributable to new staffing to directly address needs for students. Those are new positions in the budget to reflect new student needs. Thirty-eight percent of the increase is directly attributable to physical plant and facilities. And some of the items that are included in there are the roof at Hancock County Technical Center, which is one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Gym floor at Ellsworth High School and the Deluce Stadium lights, which I've already mentioned. And a feasibility facility study that we'll talk about in just a few minutes at H C T C. So, when you look at the total increase in the budget, eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of it is for facilities and maintenance, and directly attributable to new and necessary staffing. With regard to the local appropriation, when you approve this budget, we will see an overall increase, as I was heading, seven-point-eight-two percent on the expenditure side of the budget. To support a budget at this level, we'll be asking our citizens to contribute twelve million, one-hundred-eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents to support education in Ellsworth. Okay? That's an increase in the local assessment of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five That's an increase in the local assessment of $775,925.26 or 6.85%. We'd like to also remind our citizens that the Ellsworth School Department, Ellsworth School Board have consistently brought forth budgets, since we've removed ourselves from the RSU, that reflect our mission and vision, appropriately and adequately fund programming that makes our school system a highly attractive option to those considering moving to the region and taking advantage of the opportunities here. We take our role as educators and active, as active participants in the growth and development of our city seriously. We also take seriously the importance of bringing forth budgets that provide value and are fiscally responsible. Since FY '16, the year we had a 2.2% increase in expenditures, when the reduction in state funding for education was, was a challenge for us, and additional local funding was approved to make up the difference, since that year, our approved budgets have been as follows. For FY '17, we had an increase of 2.64% on the expenditure side, a little over $500,000. The local appropriation increase was 0% that year. Okay? In FY '18, we had an expenditure increase of 1.76% or just under $350,000. The local appropriation increase, the impact on taxpayers, went up by less than half a percent or $53,000. The current-year budget, FY '19, a budget increase of 3.43% on the expenditure side, okay, but a local increase, local appropriation of 2.45%. So historically, we have brought forth budgets to our city council and our citizens that reflect our goals and objectives, reflect our mission and vision, and have been fiscally responsible. We've had budgets that average less than 3% increases a year on the expenditure side, and in the last three years, 0%, half a percent, 2.45% of the local appropriation. So when we're looking at a budget this year that increases what we're asking for, for the specific reasons that we're asking for it, again, it's a responsible budget, it's consistent with mission and vision, and it adequately and appropriately funds education in the city of Ellsworth. And I know that was a great deal of information for the board, but are there any questions that you have?
What's the increase, projected increase in local appropriation percentage-wise?
Projected increase in local appropriation with this budget is 6.85%.
I think, I think I understood you to say, and I think if I understood correctly, it's worth repeating, half of, almost 50% of that increase is based on increased staffing needs due to the number of increased students coming into our community.
Increased students coming into Ellsworth High School, shifting enrollment levels at EEMS, okay, and along with students coming in, we have students coming in who have needs, who would be eligible under IDEA, which is Special Education, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, increased transportation needs. So, it's, and, excuse me, and English language learners, increases in that population as well. So yes, it's not just an increase in the number of students, but also with the needs that those students bring along with them.
Right. And that was approximately 50% of the increase?
Just under 49% of the increase, that's correct.
And a lot of our money is also for maintenance that cannot be put off anymore. I mean, we have to be able to use our gym floor, we have to be able to use these lights, we have to, we have to have a roof that stays on. Like, we can't keep putting this off. And I know from roof experience, having a bad one that needed fixed, if you put it off, it just gets more expensive. And there are other things coming in, other materials, that we expect to get, see increased in prices. If we put things off this year, we're going to pay more for those same materials in a year from now.
And, and Mr. Turnbull has done an excellent job with that. He's, he's updated our facilities and maintenance plan, so the items that have been deferred, and again, we don't defer them to the level, and have not deferred them to the level that presents a safety issue for students and staff. But, we've got a, a plan that's updated and revised, that is designed to address those needs moving forward in a consistent way that doesn't significantly raise the impact. But there are some of these pieces that we do need to take care of. For example, with the roof at HCTC, every year for the past five, six years, we've had a local contractor look at the roof and counsel us whether or not we need to replace it. We do those types of things on an annual basis. So, what we're bringing forth in this budget are items that we feel need to be done now.
We also are looking at three multimillion-dollar buildings, and we, that I believe have a life expectancy of more than 50 years, and we've just torn down a 50-year-old building because it was not taken care of. So I firmly believe that paying for maintenance on what you have is very, very important.
Right.
The other piece that I would like to add, and I, I did skip over HCTC in the discussion of the budget, I apologize, we should go back to that. At HCTC, we are also looking at a fairly sizable increase, and let's talk about why we have an increase there. One is with proposed staffing. What we're looking at is a biomedical instructor, biomedical program instructor, for the past three years has been funded over, funded under the federal Perkins Grant, it's no longer eligible for funding under Perkins, so the entire cost of that position comes into the local budget, that's about $52,000. Facilities and maintenance at HCTC, there are, there's $320,000 in those lines. It includes the roof replacement that I mentioned earlier, it includes security enhancements for the building in the form of cameras and window coverings, scheduled replacement of doors, compliance with accreditation facility recommendations, and $150,000 for a feasibility and facility study. And I think it's worth discussing that. As we've talked about at your most recent workshop, last year, we applied for funding in the main Department of Education's Capital Improvement Program for a newer renovated HCTC. In a process based upon relative needs, our application scored 17th on the state's priority list. Again, we know that we have needs in that program, not to the level that we can't operate and operate successfully, again, the success of our students is demonstration of their success and our staff's quality. We know we have needs, but they didn't rise to the level where they were higher on the state's priority list. The state's team that did their visiting determined there were 16 other projects that had higher needs than we did. Based upon the experience of our neighboring RSU 24, whose new summer high school project was 16th on the priority list back in the 2010 application cycle, they're just seeing their project starting now. Based upon that, if we were to receive funding, we would not likely be receiving it through the state program for another nine to 10 years. With that reality in mind, and with the challenge many of us have in finding local contractors, in some cases, construction, plumbing, electricians, okay, Ellsworth Business Development Corporation approached the school board back in September to offer their support to try to identify funding that would support a newer renovated HCTC in the nearer future than nine to 10 years out. Part of the premise behind that would be to help address immediate local workforce needs, enhance student pathway opportunities for students into occupations that are current for which there is a need, to benefit the economic development of not just the city of Ellsworth, but also of Hancock County and our region. Renovating or building a new facility would permit us to update HCTC to a state-of-the-art facility, with space adequate to house state-of-the-art equipment and programming, which would enhance the experience and educational pathway for students of Ellsworth and Hancock County. Okay? It would also permit the school department to continue to be an active and important cog in the ongoing economic growth and development of not only Ellsworth, but the region. As you know, from your times being in the facility and from the application, the facility is in good shape for a building that's 40 years old, but we have many of our programs that are forced to use the same space for both classroom space and laboratory space. We also have programs for which we are not able to fit the necessary equipment into the building, where students are still getting great experiences using virtual programming, but they're not able to use the actual equipment. In order for this process to move forward, and a source of funding identified for this facility, it's necessary to have a facility study conducted. And what a facility, excuse me, what a facility study would entail would be working with our staff to discuss the programming that would be in this facility. Again, the programming that would be in a new facility would be continuation of what we're currently doing, and following a similar process by which we do a revised survey of student needs across the region, high school students and middle school students, and an ongoing review of department labor statistics. Looking at what types of programs we would want in the facility, and working with the architect who we contract with to help design a facility that will meet the programming needs for our students. Okay? In consulting with the main Department of Education and a local, one of our local contractors and consultants, and also getting information with regard to a feasibility study that was done on a neighboring project down in the mid-coast, we've included $150,000 for a facility feasibility study in this budget. And again, to come back, I think you're getting ready to take a vote. It's a budget with a 7.82% increase in expenditures, an increase of 6.85% in local appropriation. And as we've said several times, bulk of the funding is to support needs that we have, nearly half of it, needs that we have for increased students, increased needs, and shifting enrollments.
I make a motion to approve the Ellsworth School Department 2019-2020 budget and authorize the superintendent to submit the budget to the Ellsworth City Council.
I second that.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Thank you. Thank you to the board and the finance committee for your work on this, and I also like to express appreciation to our administrators and our staff. You know, it's, it's been a long road working on the budget since mid-November, but as you know, with our staff, they do a great job, they're not submitting wish lists, they're submitting what we need to provide program for our students. So, great appreciation to them for their, their work throughout this process.
And thank you, Dan, for all the work you put into it.
Absolutely.
J4, confirmation of superintendent's nomination for second-year probationary contracts.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers as presented to, I will read their names, to second-year probationary contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. Jamie Anderson, Christopher Betts, Leslie Billings, Allison Briggs, Nathan Cutting, Rebecca Faulkner, Kristen Fickett, Yagmar Gunal Briggs, Catherine Hessler, Heather Waymoth, Jasmine Ireland, Jennifer Legas, Ernest Linders, Hillary Lissy, Tracy Lowe, Joshua McCormick, David McKechnie, Beth Mitchell, Dylan Patterson, Linda Van Salzbury, and Erin Wiersbinksky. And I apologize for any mispronunciations of the names that I just read.
You did very well, Mr. Markosian.
I second that motion.
Discussion? Hearing none? All of us in favor? 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of superintendent's nomination of third-year probationary contracts.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to third-year probationary contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. Sunshine Bartlett, Taylor Beatty, William Firm, Heather Ford, Laura Johns, Sarah Kane, Emily Nash, and Sarah White.
I second that.
Discussion? All of us in favor? Thank you.
Confirmation, confirmation of superintendent's nomination for continuing contracts. Recommended motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to continuing contracts for the 2019-2020 school year. Lindsay Bailey, Susan Bell, Jennifer Bernhardt, Julia Berry, Jamie Calanardo.
Calandra.
Calandra, sorry. Matthew Downs, Catherine Dvor, Stephanie McGruder, Bobby Palmer, Nicole Parity, Sarah Petroulis, Judson Raven.
Next page.
Oh. Deborah Richards, Teresa Richardson, Megan Sproul, and Megan Stubbs. I apologize if I butchered anyone's name.
Just one clarification, Suzanne Bell.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I second that.
Discussion? All of us in favor? 4-0.
Good job.
Appointment of administrative staff, Ellsworth Elementary Middle School.
Yes, I'd like to speak, and then I may, will defer to Mr. Markosian, who's on the personnel committee. As, as the board recalls, we, we appointed a principal last year for EES for a one-year period, because we had challenges in finding a suitable, certified candidate with a necessary experience. Kathy Lewis has served in that position for the year, and our intent was to go through a thorough search and selection process again this year. A search and selection advisory committee conducted that process, and went through two rounds of applications, and based upon their review, did not find a candidate that was meeting the criteria that we established. So, to that end, had a conversation with Mrs. Lewis to see if she would be interested in serving for another year. So with that being said, let me just read this to you. As the board recalls, Kathy Lewis was appointed as principal at EES in June of 2018, following a search process that produced no candidates. As she did when she was appointed interim principal in May of 2018, Mrs. Lewis had significantly and positively impacted and contributed to the success of our school with a focus not just on staff, but primarily on students. When she was hired for the one-year position, the intent was to engage in a full-scale search process for a successor for the 1920 school year. Based upon what I just said, we've determined that, that was not a successful piece, so we've asked Mrs. Lewis if she was interested. Mrs. Lewis is interested and willing to return, but under one stipulation. She wanted teachers to be spoken with by their colleagues to determine if they were interested in having her back. And I can tell you that the response from staff was overwhelmingly affirmative. So, upon consensus of the search advisory committee, with the consensus of the Ellsworth School Department Personnel Committee, I am recommending that the board appoint Kathy Lewis as principal of EES for the 2019-2020 school year, with the understanding that we will conduct, again, a search for a K4 principal very early next spring.
And may I add, as a member of the search committee, along with Rob Hudson, who couldn't be here tonight, and two teachers from Ellsworth Elementary School, as well as Dan, it was, we all, we had very high standards for the person we wanted to put into this position because we need, we felt like we needed to have high standards. The school deserved it, the students deserved it, the staff deserves it, the parents and community deserves it. And it's, it's difficult right now in educational circles, too, there, there is a shortage of administrators. And we have a school that has a lot of students, that's well over, in just the elementary school itself, there's, what's the number, Kathy?
484.
484, so we're, you know, we're getting close to 500. So, there's a lot of moving pieces, there's a lot of challenges, and, and, so, we didn't, we didn't find what we were looking for, but we were fortunate enough, we actually dug up some dirt on Mrs. Lewis and blackmailed her into, just kidding. We were very grateful that she was willing to give us one more year, and thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. So, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Kathy Lewis to continue in her position for the 19, 2019-2020 school year.
I second that motion.
All of us in favor? Oh, you want to discuss?
No, but you have to say it.
Discussion.
Discussion. All of us in favor? I wasn't going to allow anyone to talk.
Congratulations, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're the lucky ones.
Mrs. Thomas, may I make a recommendation? I know that we have an item on the agenda where we had asked people to be here at approximately 7:30.
Okay, sure.
So I'm wondering, with, with the other items on here, I think we could defer and move the item 10 to proceed item 8.
Okay.
We just need a motion and a second and an action to do that.
I make a motion that we move item 10 to proceed item 8 of the agenda.
I second that.
Okay. Discussion? All of us in favor? All of us in favor?